Senate City Council, the Lord of the Lords, March 10th, 2025, 6:00 p.m. Here at the Lewis's Library, our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can't hear you.
I hope that helps because I feel like I'm yelling. Can't hear me. Better. Okay. Well, we're going to move to our next order of business, Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please stand and join us reciting the pledge. All right.
Pledge of Allegiance, super tight. Space member. In two thirty, public. What? You need this.
Try and leave this a little bit closer here. See if that will help. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. Also, the Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote stability within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city. So if you are here tonight to provide citizen comments, we have a microphone set up in the middle of the floor back there. All we need is your name and your city of residence. We don't need your physical address. So three minutes, if you're here for citizen comments, welcome.
Am I the first?
You're live. Thank you, Lanaya.
Hi, my name is Lanaya Noreen. I'm the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce in town. I also live in Lewiston. I'm speaking on behalf of the proposed bond for the infrastructure project. This affects all of the business community in Lewiston as all water flows downhill. This includes places in the orchards and outlying areas that might not necessarily think that downtown is an issue that affects them. When systems fail, businesses fail. This is in situations where businesses then have to tap into insurance, they might not have the funds, and we need our infrastructure to be working. Our economic vitality is also dependent on a vibrant downtown, which is not possible when storefronts are shuttered because property owners cannot develop their properties. Thriving downtowns attract professionals. If you've tried recruiting doctors or veterinarians to the area, downtowns are one of the key pieces that people are looking towards in addition to schools and other things. It also means we have a larger tourist base to spread the tax base. This project is not projected to cost any additional tax, but allowing the systems to fail likely will. That's what has the business community very supportive of this initiative. We don't want to wait till a point where the systems do fail and we're not only looking at replacing the systems, but also mitigating any damage that might ensue. So for this reason, we strongly support passing the motion to allow the voters to vote on May 20th.
Thank you, Lanaya. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Deb Center. I'm the owner of DC Designs Downtown, and I live in Lewiston, Idaho. I'm here to support what Lanaya has already talked about. This is very crucial that we do this in one, one-time period and not two. I can't imagine myself or some of the other businesses to financially go through that hardship. I totally support the bond. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Darcy Vassar Kupcinski. I'm a Realtor with Coldwell Banker, and I reside in Lewiston, Idaho. I'm also here to support the bond. I think it is the logical and proactive approach to alleviating our aging city's infrastructure. We have 100-plus-year-old systems under these sidewalks and streets. They will fail, we just don't know when. The money is allocated at this point to open up the streets. It only makes sense to do it all at one time. Our business, Coldwell Banker, is also right across the street. These smaller businesses, these independently owned businesses, I can't imagine them surviving if we did this in three different phases. It will be hard enough, the dollars lost during one major construction period where everything, everything will be torn up. I think it make to do it all at once, and again, I'm here to support the bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Jennifer, I think we lost our Zoom connection. Are we able to move forward until we reestablish that, or would you advise differently?
Mayor, I'm not aware who was actually on the Zoom, but it looks like there is some connection going on.
I see that now coming on. Let me just get the. Thank you, Neil. John Michael, welcome.
Yeah, John Michael Lewiston. I'd like to see five minutes at the mic if possible. I always feel rushed when I get up here. I've got several things I'd like to touch on tonight. As usual, with the homeless situation, we've got to find ways of reducing fear between homeless people and everybody else. Ooh, the needles and, you know, that kind of thing. But there's nobody more afraid of anybody else than a homeless person, right? So the kinder, the gentler, the more open we can be with them, the more trust they're going to have in the rest of us, and that's going to reduce crime, that's going to reduce drug use. If somebody feels like they belong, they're not going to be wanting to do those things much, okay? Another thing, and this, that's the end of that topic, but I would like to see the cities, the cities seriously explore, you talk about what attracts doctors and veterinarians, open space, green space. So find a way to get Bengal Field, turn that into a city park. I think it's a good idea, it's right there. You could maybe even put a little museum building in there for the athletics that used to go on there. And I noticed you've got some new people going on your parks department. I'd like to see a little more vision coming out of that group. Why not start a walking campaign? And you know, you've got, oh, that canyon up by the new school where everybody uses, you know, you've got bike paths, walking paths. We've got a lot of canyons through here. Why not do that everywhere? And as far as you've got these sidewalks coming downtown from the city, why not really beautify those and make them nice, lots of wildflowers, that kind of thing? Oh, yeah. Oh, in long range downtown, what I would do is I would cut off traffic completely from Fifth Sixth, New Sixth. I would put a parking garage back where, oh, the food bank is. I'd also put another parking garage over at that parking lot that is across from Brackenberry Square, and you could put, you know, I mean, grass, you could have more water displays all the way through there and widen the sidewalks. If you don't do that, I would at least reduce the speed limit downtown to 15 miles an hour. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John Michael. Appreciate it. Other citizen comments tonight? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Room number four. Item A, Fire Department Penning Ceremony. Fire Chief Wright Meyer will conduct the penning ceremony to honor Captain Kyler Nelson. Engineer Jake Wade says, well, actually, we're down to two, and I don't know who's here tonight, so why don't I just put a period right after the ceremony and say Fire Chief Wright Meyer will conduct a penning ceremony and turn the floor up. Can you keep?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'll just talk. Good evening. Really excited to see everybody here today, Mayor, Council. Departments that we're going to recognize. Fair play to the ones you ran. I heard him, I didn't have to have a heart. All you've done is raise a mic. Have you raised your right hand, please? Can we repeat that? Right? Oh, I swear. In compassion. First with the policies and procedure. Fire Department. Best of my knowledge, skilled. We have a saying in the fire service that takes after the military, brothers and marine force, separate by the. Keep that tradition. We're going to fire fighter person in our. Karen, especially thanks to you, the director of capacity in our organization. Firefighter, engineer. All these procedures.
Thank you.
Well, again, we congratulate Captain Nelson and firefighter Webb. Also, next we'll move to room number five, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the councilor's request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda. Excuse me, under items moved from the consent agenda. Councilors? Counselor Schroder?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. I agree.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forsman to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Rocky?
Counselor President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next, we'll move to room number six, Active Agenda. Item A, 6A Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. This is an action item. Number one, A1 Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, considering reappointing Linda Glines and appointing Larry Kupcinski to three-year terms. It's actually, I think, in reverse, we're reappointing Larry Kupcinski and appointing Linda Glines. I did meet with both of these candidates and asked them why they wanted to serve and asked them for a little bit more about their views on where they think the future the Parks and Rec Department should head. So I had some very interesting comments from them, things to share, and they're excited and ready to serve. So I will do this in one motion. I move to approve the reappointment of Larry Kupcinski to a three-year term in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission and the appointment of Linda Glines to a three-year term in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor President Kleber, to approve the reappointment of Larry Kupcinski to a three-year term in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission and appoint Linda Glines to a three-year term in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next, we'll move to item B, Master Services Agreement with Clearwater Financial LLC, considering approving the Master Services Agreement with Clearwater Financial LLC and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item, and I'm going to hand the gavel over to Counselor President Kleber, counsel, in case you have questions for me. You have in your packet there. Clear this thing up. Six B. Right here, the Master Service Agreement with Clearwater Financial. Briefly, we've used Clearwater Financial several times in our past. In the most recent past, we used them to help us with our community park. They worked with us on some of our public relations efforts. And then also, we had the building feasibility study, which some of you were involved with, and we've used them with our negotiations for fact-finding with the International Association of Firefighters, and we do, we will be using them for our Get Out the Vote campaign on this bond election. We've already signed that agreement, I have. This Master Services Agreement is brought to you so that you can take a look at it and approve it, should you desire to do that. My recommendation is that you do. You'll see on page 95 of your packet, it covers the professional services that Clearwater Financial will provide with this contract, with this agreement, and then you'll also see the municipal advisory and financial services that they provide. So for example, should we go to bond, they will help us with the financing provisions of that. The terms of this contract is through September 30th of this year, and it may be renewed automatically for up to five additional one-year terms, and then it'll terminate September 30th of 2020. Automatic renewal is wholly contingent upon the annual preparation of funds for these services, so should you not decide to fund it during a budget year, then it would not apply. And then either party may terminate with or without cause, given a 30 days written notice. One of the new things about this Master Services Agreement that the last one did not have is a retainage fees. It's an annual fee of $12,000, and what that provides for us is additional services, really. We're able to use them on any project that takes less than 45 hours of the consultant's time. It covers their availability and commitment to undertake the projects. And so, for example, if we had a small, it could be followed, say, on a building feasibility, and they had to spend 20, 30 hours doing research for us, that would be covered in that retainer fee. We wouldn't pay extra for that, or we may have questions on other financial services. And again, these are items that would not cost us. If it went over 45 hours, then we'd have to have a separate agreement with them to pay for that. That is an annual retainage fee, and in our estimate, it's going to be a better deal for the city. Also, when we talk about bonding, we get a, I'll say, a preferred rate, lower cost for bonding by using this agreement, this type of agreement. That was one of the incentives for us wanting to sign this. I guess with that, counselors, I'll try to answer any questions you may have. We have a good working relationship with, Clearwater Financial, a long-term working relationship with them, and I would recommend that you consider approving this Master Services Agreement.
There are projects that they, like, are there things that are out of their scope that we would, or are they pretty broad as far as what we could use them for to gather information?
Counselor, could you ask the question again?
So is there anything that's out of their scope of being able to provide, and then we'd have to maybe go to a different financial service person to get that, or can they pretty much do anything?
Well, there might be some services that we demand in the future that maybe they're not the best qualified for, and so then we would have to seek services elsewhere. I think that is very possible. And in fact, really, it's kind of in part why this is before you, because the original Master Services Agreement was signed for the community park, and we started to operate under that for some of these other projects that we've had lately, and then we realized that that doesn't apply. We have to have a new agreement, a new Master Services Agreement, to cover those. We can't operate under the old agreement, so that's why we severed that one, and we're bringing you this new Master Services Agreement iteration.
A lot of that deferred maintenance, we can use them to maybe gather some estimates and.
So, Counselor, when we did that feasibility study on a potential consolidation, part of that discussion was in the future, we may be looking at a master facilities plan for the city? And so we could use them for that. We might look at doing an RFP because it'd be a larger project, and having folks bid on that, that may have an interest in providing that service. So I don't know that I can say that they would be the contract that we would use necessarily, but I know that they have an interest in providing those services.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Oh, you've got the gap, don't you? Okay.
Well, he handed it to me, so.
That's why I'm looking at you, I guess. Okay. What was I going to do? I'm, I move to approve the Master Services Agreement, Financial LLC, and the city of Lewiston, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have further discussion. Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you. So, Mayor, on this, we're committing to 12,000. I didn't hear a lot of it. So if there's something that comes up additional, then it has to come back to the council for additional funding, or how's that work?
No, Counselor, that's a good question. The $12,000 retainer should be, allows us to use them for consulting services, if you will. It could be questions on how to design a project or projects that we're currently working on, or maybe to gather some additional, it could be financial information, but other information such as the examples I gave you with, like the feasibility studies and building and stuff like that. So that's all included in the $12,000 fee, and that's unlimited, as long as a single request or project does not take more than 45 hours to complete that request. So if we had 10 separate requests, we made of them this year, and they each took 40 hours, that's all covered by that retainage fee. If we came across a project and we found out that, well, it's going to take a lot more time than that, then we would have to negotiate that under separate agreement because that would not be covered by that, because it would take, say, 200 hours to do that project. So they would have to come to us, and we would have to approve that before they undertook that. Have any further questions? Being none.
Being none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Mayor? Thank you, Council President. Item C, Envision Lewiston 2044 Implementation Work Plan 2024 to 2025, considering approving Envision Lewiston 2044 Implementation Work Plan 2024-2025. This is an action item. Our city planner, Joel Plaskon, is with us here tonight. Counselors, if you have questions. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the Envision Lewiston 2044 Implementation Work Plan 2024-2025, and authorizing the mayor to sign the plan.
Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Kleber to approve the Envision Lewiston 2044 Implementation Work Plan 2024 to 2025, and authorizing the mayor to sign the plan. Is there further discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Item D, Resolution 2025-10, considering declaring an item of city Lewiston property to be surplus and providing for the trade-in of said surplus property. This is an action item. Again, it's in your packet, if you read it. Our finance director here, Amy Gordon, is here. If you have questions. Otherwise, counsel, I'd entertain a motion. Counselor Klein?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-10.
Second?
It's been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Schroder to approve Resolution 2025-10. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Clerk Rocky, next up, item E, Resolution 2025-11, considering declaring various items of city Lewiston property to be surplus and providing for the public auction of said surplus property. This is an action item. Again, our finance director here, Ms. Amy Gordon, is here. Otherwise, counselors, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Yeah, I had one quick question for Director Gordon.
Director Gordon, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Amy Gordon, City Treasurer.
I was just curious, when I was looking at, it looked like the ownership of the items, why half of them said finance?
That's because they are property of the Fleet Division, which is a division of finance.
Thank you. Sorry to make you get up.
I will add, though, the funds that are received at the auction go back to the purchasing fund, and since Fleet is a separate fund, an internal service fund, the money would go into that fund for those items.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-11.
Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve Resolution 2025-11. Is there further discussion? Very none. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have item F, First Amendment to Community Park Master Plan, PRN PF 016 and PRN Agreement, considering approving the First Amendment to the Community Park Master Plan Professional Services Agreement between JUB Engineers Incorporated and the City of Lewiston, the amount of $48,000, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. Counselors, if you have questions for Community Development Director Shannon Groh, she's here with us tonight. If not, I would entertain a motion. Counselor?
Oops, sorry, go on.
Did you have a question, counsel?
Yeah, I had a question. I thought. I'm sorry. Trying to gather my thoughts.
Director Groh, welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Where was this equipment going, again?
Shannon Groh, Community Development Director and Interim Parks Director. This is on Site 1, so it's very close to the Warner Avenue site, but closer to Ziggy's and the water tower.
Right. I thought we had a grant with some of this. No? There was no grant money at all?
Not with this one. You might be thinking of, oh, no.
No?
No. But what you might be thinking about is the fitness equipment has already been purchased, and it was purchased several years ago.
Oh, maybe.
It's possible there might have been a grant connected to that?
Yeah. I know we visited this a long time ago. It's something to refresh my memory. So, okay, yeah, that probably makes more sense. Thank you.
Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the First Amendment to the Park Master Plan Professional Services Agreement between JUB and the City of Lewiston, $1,000, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve the First Amendment to the Community Park Master Plan Professional Services Agreement between JUB Engineers Inc. and the City of Lewiston, the amount of $48,000, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Is there further discussion? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my biggest concern about this is I consider this a want and not a need. And I don't know, even though it's just $48,000, it kind of gets the ball rolling for the rest of it. And what I see with our current, our financial challenges we have this year, for things like this, I think we should wait till after we see the impact of if the bond's gonna pass and what our budget looks like. I just don't think this is the time to be spending money on wants, when we have a lot of needs waiting in line for a budget.
Thank you, counselor.
Fair.
Counselor Forstman?
With that bond, this is a specific, which fund does this come out of, this money?
Shannon Groh, Community Development Director, Interim Parks Director. This is the assigned building fund.
So would that even touch the bond money if in the case that we needed to, like, could we use that assigned building fund money to cover that bond cost, that Main Street project?
Uh, no.
I don't think so.
Counselor Wright?
Is the assigned building fund, is that the same fund that we looked at, where we were talking about replacing HVACs, replacing roofs?
That is correct, yes.
Of that nature?
Yep.
I have another question. So you were talking about that gym equipment. So we already have that, right? So this is to basically start implementing that equipment that we currently have?
Yeah, this is to design the site. So you have the basketball courts and the lighting, and those types of things need to be designed for slopes and asphalt and all the electrical systems and that kind of thing. So this is the design of that site. We already have half the equipment for, if not more than half.
How much would you say that equipment is, that's just sitting there?
That I don't know. I have to go back to you. I have no idea. $150,000 to $200,000.
A lot of money just to sit there.
Amy, do you know if it was 22? Yeah. We'd love to get it out of the service center in place.
Thank you.
Counselors, this project has been lingering. We tried to complete this two years ago and didn't. And so we're to the point now, we're just trying to get it completed and move forward. Some of the delay was due in part because we're trying to complete the conversion on that property, identifying where the LWCF lands are. That has come in discussion, and we're working on that. You'll see that come before you soon. But we're just trying to march in order, so we don't get crossfly somewhere. Counselor Wright?
Is there, I heard this is for the design. Is there additional costs after this, or is this the final cost to get this equipment in place?
I should just stay up here. Shannon Groh, Community Development Director, Interim Parks Director. This is the design. After design is construction. So, yes, there will be additional costs. And that would come before the council as well. Typically, what we like to do in the city, or what we should be doing, is we take a look at the design, we decide what can be done in-house and what would have to be contracted out. So, for example, the CENI on this project is not in the design right now, because what we are hoping, but we don't know for sure, is that we will be able to do the CENI, which is the construction, engineering, and inspection for this project.
Sorry, Mayor, one more question. If I remember correctly, the only basketball courts that we have is Airport Park, correct? Do we have them anywhere?
Yes, we used to have them at Sunset, but that became the pickleball courts.
Right, okay. Yeah, I've heard from a couple citizens, especially down in that area, that they were pretty bummed they got, they lost out on their basketball court. So we don't have more than the one at Airport, which isn't actually technically even city-owned, because we lease it. So that, I have heard from citizens that they would like to have more basketball courts. Thank you.
Counselors, if you have your packets loaded, if you go to page 123, there's a nice summary there of how we got to this point today. And if you'd like to take a minute to read that, I'll pause here for a moment, but I think that'll answer some of your questions about how we got to this. And if we have additional questions, we can ask Director Groh. No further questions. It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve the First Amendment to the Community Park Master Plan Professional Services Agreement between JUB Engineers, Inc. and the City of Lewiston, the amount of $48,000, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, item G, Resolution 2025-02, considering vacating the public right-of-way in VA-01-2024. This is an action item, and we have our Public Works Director Dustin Johnson with us here tonight. Welcome, Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. In front of you here, you're talking about Wayback Machine here. This is a right-of-way vacation that's been kind of under consideration for probably the better part of a decade. If you remember, there was a public hearing back in August of '24. The council accepted the conditions. Basically, I believe the council kind of pointed the applicant and staff to go forth and work out the details. It only took us six months to get here, or greater than six months. To go back, this is a vacation of Brighton Avenue, so you're thinking Big Brighton. This is the Little Brighton. This is the extent of way out, right there at the canyon of Lindsey Creek, where Brighton essentially ends, so between 18th and 19th. If you remember, there was a subdivision to the north, and there was Brighton Canyon. I think it was Clearwater, another road to the north of it, which created double-fronted lots for that subdivision and the residents of that. Ask the city and the developer to the south if we could work out a way to vacate that right-of-way. And this is the conclusion of it. Basically, the reason it took so long was to work out with the neighboring property owner to get an emergency turnaround. So the roads, all with the vacation of that right-of-way, all of the other roads within that network now still comply with our standards. So I am here for questions, if there are any.
Counselors? Counselor Schroder?
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Consider, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-0.
Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve Resolution 2025-02. Is there further discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counselors, next up, we have item H, Resolution 2025-09, considering adopting the City of Lewiston 2025 Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. This is an action item. And again, we have our Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson, with us here tonight. Welcome, Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. So this is basically the resolution that adopts the capital improvement plan that we had the public hearing for on February 24th. So we had to compile the projects that we discussed, put together the resolution, and so here we are for the adoption.
Mayor?
Counselor Forstman?
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-09.
Been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Schroder to approve Resolution 2025-09. Is there discussion?
I just had a comment.
Counselor Klein?
I wanted to, I just wanted to apologize to the staff that spent so much time working on a new version of this, when we ultimately just went back to 2024, and hope we can improve on that next year to keep the ball rolling in one direction.
Yeah, we do appreciate that. I think next year, one concept that we had is to have a more, a work session specifically for this, allow the council to not try and do it from a screen, where we can physically see the projects and move them around, and then we bring it to the public hearing. Just because, yeah, we keep trying to reinvent it every year and get more public engagement, involvement, and feedback, yet we still end up at the same place. So, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, counsel, it's been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Schroder to approve Resolution 2025-09. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counselors, next we move to item I, Ordinances. One, First Reading A, Ordinance 4921, considering repealing and reserving Section 37-129 of the Lewiston City Code entitled "Use of Prefabricated Containerized Transport Units as Accessory Buildings or Storage Units," and amending Section 37-131 of the Lewiston City Code allowing use of shipping containers as an accessory building. This is an action item. And once again, we have our city planner with us here, Mr. Joel Plaskon. Joel, do you have a staff report for us tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, any questions? Other than that, otherwise, Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 4921 by title.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 4921 by title only. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4921, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston, repealing and reserving Section 37-129 of the Lewiston City Code entitled "Use of Prefabricated Containerized Transport Units as Accessory Buildings or Storage Units," and amending Section 37-131 of the Lewiston City Code allowing use of shipping containers as an accessory building and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counselors, next we move to item two, first, second, and third readings. Item A, Ordinance 4940, considering amending Ordinance 4929 by replacing Exhibits A and B of Lewiston City Ordinance 4929. This is an action item, and we have our city attorney, Ms. Jennifer Tengano, with us here tonight. Jennifer, please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Counselors. My name's Jennifer Tengano, City Attorney, and I'm here today to request that you approve the first, second, and third readings of Ordinance Number 4940. When we originally approved this, what happened is that the applicant provided a legal description for the property. As the state was processing it through the State Tax Commission, it was discovered that the legal description was incorrect. The State Tax Commission had asked for revisions to a map, and when we were revising the map, that's when the legal description error came up. As a result, we're requesting that the legal description included in, as Exhibit A, and the map as Exhibit B to City Ordinance Number 4930 be replaced as a part of this ordinance. And then it reaffirms the prior actions in 4930, and approving the rezone that was subject to that particular city. I'm sorry, that was the annexation. It was reaffirming the annexation of the property. The next request is related to the rezone. The next request is related to the rezone. And I stand for questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counselors, questions for Jennifer Tengano? Okay, Counselor Schroder.
Motion to read Ordinance Number 4940 by title only and to dispense with the requirements that an ordinance be read on three different days and that it be read once in full.
Okay.
They're moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forstman to read Ordinance Number 4940 by title only and to dispense with the requirements that an ordinance be read on three different days and that it be read once in full. Are there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Clerk Rocky.
Approving the first, second, and third readings of Ordinance 4940, and Ordinance amending Ordinance Number 4929 by replacing Exhibits A and B of Lewiston City Ordinance Number 4929 and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Next, we have item B, Ordinance 4941, Considering Amending Ordinance 4930 by replacing Exhibit A of Lewiston City Ordinance 4930. This is an action item. Again, we have our city attorney, Jennifer Tengano, with us. Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors. Jennifer Tengano, City Attorney. This is the second ordinance that was associated with that annexation. This particular ordinance zoned the property and included the incorrect legal description. Therefore, we're asking for, to replace the Exhibit A, which is where the legal description was included for that ordinance. And then, the Ordinance 4941 affirms the prior action related to the zoning of the property. Again, this is a request to have all three readings of the ordinance approved today.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counselors, questions? Counselor Schroder.
I move to read Ordinance Number 4941 by title only and to dispense with, ordinance be read on three different days and be read once in full.
Second. They're moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Wright to read Ordinance Number 4941 by title only and to dispense with the requirements that an ordinance be read on three different days and that it be read once in full. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Rocky.
Approving the first, second, and third readings of 4941.
Jennifer, I'm going to ask you a question before we get out of here tonight because I didn't want to have to come back. Looking at my notes, did you want a separate vote on the motion to combine and dispense and then vote on the ordinance?
Mayor, actually, I've changed around the language to make it simpler. So, the particular votes here, what they do is they approve a reading by title only, the dispense with the requirements that it be read on three different days, and it dispenses with the requirement that it be read once in full. So, there's no need to combine the second and third readings because you've already dispensed with the rule that requires the three readings on three separate days. You've approved it by title only, and you've dismissed the reading in once in full. So...
Thank you for that clarification.
And I've changed that on the other ordinance as well. When we do a second and third readings, I've changed the way that that's done. The language is in there to match with the statute a little bit more and to make it clearer what is actually being done. So, you'll notice a change with that one, too.
Thank you. Counselors, next we're moved to item C, Ordinance 4943, calling for the submission to the qualified electors of the city the question of incurring an indebtedness and issuing general obligation bonds to the city in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25 million to pay the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to wastewater, water, stormwater, and road infrastructure and related improvements, approving the form of ballot providing for the registration of voters and related matters. This is an action item. And once again, we have our Public Works Director Dustin Johnson here with us tonight. Director, welcome.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. Tonight, we bring you this ordinance that will request the voters to approve a $25 million bond. The catalyst behind this was the water mains in downtown. As staff began to work with that, and that was funded through the ARPA dollars. As we worked through it, conversations with the downtown property owners, the elected body, it became apparent that a lot of the other infrastructure that's downtown is in similar condition as the water lines. And so, at that point, staff took it to the council, and we went out and got an engineering consultant to come onboard to put together a concept design. And this is basically the product of what we've worked through. There's been a lot of conversations with downtown property owners. We've had multiple town halls or open houses to discuss what the impact of the project would be to them. There was individual interviews with all of the property owners to just try and better understand what is going on down there. I think one thing that is important is that this bond uses funds from multiple sources. You know, the water funds that you pay for your water system go for the water improvements, the wastewater, your wastewater fees go for the wastewater component. And then, we talked earlier about the arterial reconstruction component, which is carved out of general funds. That goes into reconstruction, reconstructing the transportation facilities. A lot of times, we talk about capital improvements, and we silo those off into individual projects, whether it's being wastewater treatment plant across the river or water plant. This, what we're talking about tonight, is a unique opportunity where we have four, five, six, however you want to carve it out, different funding sources available to take on a much larger project. I don't have anything prepared for PowerPoints or slides or maps. I think we've kind of rode that horse pretty hard. What you have in front of you here is the simple ballot language. I just wanted to bring that up. We did work with the county to get the word count to narrow it down directly to the 250-word count that they've requested. And so, that's what you have before you, which is what would be on the ballot. I will add, I think there's a lot of questions out there right now. I've been inundated. I say inundated in a good way. That's why I work for the public, and that's good. I would be concerned if I hadn't been getting questions. And so, I'm eager to have this dialogue. There, you know, and I think what we talked about at the work session last week was everything here is an estimate. You know, the bond is a nice even $25 million. The project, we have funds in capital that can go towards it. Overall, the project's estimated at $33 million. It may be less, it may be more. We have a lot of things to work out in the final design. We have a lot of ground truthing, if you want to call it that, to get out there and discover how to best make this project successful for Lewiston. And so, I'm eager to exchange ideas with the public, with the council, with the press, whoever wants to talk about this. I'm eager because this is, as some of the public comment has already come up tonight, this is a long overdue project. And I think it's time to, you know, take something on of this magnitude. One last comment is, we're working on public, I don't even have a title for them at this point. Town halls, open houses. We'll schedule the first one next week, next Wednesday, the March, hold on, March 19th, 5:30 to 7:30 in this room, will be the first kickoff public engagement meeting for post-bond pending approval of this ordinance tonight.
Say that time again, sorry.
5:30 to 7:30, March 19th.
Thank you.
Wednesday, in this room. We'll have a press release. We'll blast it so we make sure we get people here. So, with that, we have Clearwater Financial on Zoom to answer any questions, and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director.
And we have the city attorney who's helped a lot on this process, who may answer any of the legal questions.
Thank you, Director. Kristi, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay. There you go. Thank you. Kristi, would you please introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, Kristi is still Clearwater Financial.
Thank you. Counselors, questions? Comments? Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Director, this might, it's probably doesn't have anything to do with the ordinance. But I'm curious, so how do we address the LID portion of it?
Well, the LID portion was purposely picked out from the project as a whole. So, we can build the project. So, that cost was over above what was already. So, we, to pave it back and make it what it is essentially today is baked into that price. If you wanted to put pavers, pedestrian scale lighting, extra items, that's that cost overrun. So, if the downtown property owner said, let's create an LID, or there was a bond that, you know, the city or the property owners wanted to go get, there is a URA district down there. There's multiple funding sources that go beyond than what is here on a bond. So, council told us not to include that. That was originally $27 million. So, that was peeled out, which is where we got that 25.
Hey, council, we're going to take our time, make sure we ask all the questions we need to ask, and take advantage of having Kristi with us tonight. Other questions, counselors? Council President Kleber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Dustin, we got a meeting on the 19th, 5:30 to 7:30. And I think we talked about at the work session, perhaps having one up in the orchards.
Yep, yeah, we wanted to have one, a bit of feedback that we've been getting is, where are we going to find all this information? So, we wanted to have a date for next week, early on. We'll have one up at the orchards, which we haven't scheduled. We got to find a location, you know, get that scheduled. And I wanted to have three. So, it's March 10th. The ballot, or the election is on May 20th. So, kind of space them out. But next week, you know, while everybody's talking about it, get, strike while the iron's hot. But we'll have progressively through the next two months more engagement opportunities.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to add something, but I think that's really important. This is a generational project for the city. And I can't stress, I mean, I've talked to, and I live in the orchards. Most of my friends live up in the orchards. And I've talked to them, not till I'm blue in the face, just maybe getting a little, you know, red. But I think I've been able to get some buy-in. People, you know, once they get past the initial shock, oh, you're just going to raise our taxes. But we're not talking about raising taxes, but doing a project of this magnitude, what the ramifications are of not doing this project. And in my opinion, particularly when it comes to wastewater, if we had a big event down there, we'd have wastewater backed up like this town's never seen before. And that's something we can't really afford to do, so...
The wastewater pipes that we're talking about are 24 inches to 36 inches.
Correct.
And they're full.
Yeah.
Counselors, we're going to take our time here, make sure we don't have any last minute thoughts. I'm going to point out, just by way of example, in our vouchers payable tonight, there was an item on there for a sewer mainline repair on Main Street. Now, it was on the 1200 block, which is not within this project area. But nonetheless, these are things that we're doing constantly to keep the service lines up and running. And sometimes, you know, you can die by a thousand cuts or you're going to have this big, you know, failure somewhere. So, the need is very real. I know that. Counselor Spickelmeier, here.
So, Director, if the bond passes, when would the project start?
So... I'm just, this is my presentation from last week. We are still better part of a year away from completing the full design. And so, I like to, what do I, what is it? You know, over-deliver and undersell, where realistically, that would put us, you know, construction starting around 2026. I don't want to over-commit to that date and draw it in, you know, with ink because you never know what you find out. There's a lot of phasing, trying to figure out best way to, you know, detour traffic and get business accesses and carve out what, you know, constructibility, what is the best way to approach it. But we're looking, you know, 26, 27 would be when we'd be looking to start construction.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
So, with that, would the first payments delay till start? Or they start right away because you have the, you've got the loan?
I asked that question. I'm going to defer that to the money people.
Kristi, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did hear the question. So, and Stephanie, feel free to join in as well. But you will have the option to, you don't have to take out all of the $25 million at the same time. You will pay interest and principal on what you actually take out. So, if you, we can sell the bond in, we can sell the bond, but we don't necessarily have a payment due until when you go to take them out. So, I guess, let me rephrase that. You don't have to sell all the bonds at once. This bond ordinance gives you the ability to bond out up to $25 million. And you can do that in, you don't have to do it all at once. So, if you needed a certain amount to finish design, per se, you could issue those bonds, and then you could come back for the rest of it.
This is Stephanie Bonney. I am the City's Bond Counsel. So, I'm the bond attorney that helped make sure the ballot met all the requirements and would do the paperwork to sell bonds. You would also have the option of doing a bond anticipation note. It will just, part of that will be working with Clearwater. They will give you different options and the costs. That is one way in which you can basically take out a construction loan, and then, you just, you don't make any payments on it till the end. And then, you sell the bond at the end. And then, generally, your first payment isn't until a year after. Another option that Clearwater can work with you on, and as Kristi said, there's no length of time in which you need to sell these bonds. They're tied to the project, so you could divide them up. But you could also sell a bond, and we could do what's called capitalized interest, if you'd like, which means you basically borrow the interest money for a certain amount of time until you need to make your first payment. I don't think you'll need to do that because you're planning on using other sources other than tax levies, which is unusual here. But you will have all kinds of options. And that's the whole purpose of Clearwater, is to help the city borrow the money in the cheapest way possible.
Yeah, thank you. And what we would do is, we would work, once the bond passes, we would then work with your staff and your project timeline. To Dustin's point and to your question, Counselor, it is kind of a little bit undetermined exactly what the timeline's going to be and what you're going to need it for. So, we would want to make sure that we're scheduling those funds or using them appropriately to not incur debt before needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi and Bonney. Other questions, counselors?
I would just ask...
Counselor Wright, yeah, please speak up.
When I first heard of this project, it made sense to me. You've got a water line, you've got sewage line, you've got the storm drain system. And the people who came in and spoke had similar thoughts that I did when I heard of it. We're going to dig up the road. Let's replace all these lines. I believe I heard the water line's over 100 years old. The sewage line is coming up on 100 years old. Why not, why not get it all done at the same time? And save all that cost and impact to the community of digging a hole three times? Wanted to add that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
Just a comment. I know to...
Just a comment. I know, to kind of piggyback off of Counselor Wright. Every time we cause an inconvenience for businesses, that's money out of their pocket, now that we're not getting customers to come regularly to fill their budget. And so, as he says, if we can, if we, the less we have to tear that road up and the less we're of an inconvenience to those business owners down there, the better that they have success to thrive. And obviously, we know we're in economic times that are weird, and we are losing a lot of stores, and a lot of cities are. So we want to make sure that we're business friendly and that we're doing this tactfully. And I think that this is an opportunity to do that. If we waited, and then as Counselor Kleberg said, if we, it's just, we have a pipe burst or something happens, well, now we're forced to do it, and now we're trying to put a Band-Aid to get things done, which is going to cost even more money and possibly damage to business owners, so, and their buildings. So I think this is a very important project to get done, and we need to, you want a thriving city, then you need to have a thriving downtown.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Counselors, I don't see more questions. Counselor Schroder?
I move to read ordinance forty-three by title only, and to, I missed something?
No, you're good.
Okay. To dispense with the requirements that an ordinance be read on three different days in full.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forstman, to read ordinance number forty-nine forty-three by title only, and to dispense with the requirements that an ordinance be read on three different days, and that it be read once in full. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Brockie?
Approving the first, second, and third readings of ordinance forty-nine forty-three. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston, Nez Perce County, Idaho, ordering a special bond election to be held on the question of the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city in an amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars for the purpose of constructing improvements to wastewater, water, stormwater, and road infrastructure and related improvements in costs, establishing the date of time of the special bond election, approving, approving a form of ballot, providing for registration of voters, providing for related matters, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie and Counselors. Next, we move to number three, second and third readings. Item A, ordinance forty-nine thirty-seven, considering repealing chapter seven of the Lewiston City Code related to ambulance service and enacting a new chapter seven entitled ambulance service. This is an action item. Our fire chief, Greg Wrightmeyer, is here tonight. If you have questions, Counselors, otherwise, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Speckelmeier?
Motion to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and to combine the second and third readings.
Been moved by Counselor Speckelmeier, seconded by Counsel President Kleberg, to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and to combine the second and third readings. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Counselor Speckelmeier?
Motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-nine thirty-seven and approve the reading of ordinance number forty-nine thirty-seven by title only.
Been moved by Counselor Speckelmeier, seconded by Counselor Schroder, to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-nine thirty-seven and approve the reading of ordinance forty-nine thirty-seven by title only. Is there discussion or amendments? If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Clerk Brockie?
Forty-nine thirty, an ordinance, the city of Lewiston, repealing chapter seven.
Thank you, Counselors. Next, we'll move to number four, adoption approval of ordinance summaries. Item A, ordinance forty-nine thirty-seven. Counselor Speckelmeier?
Motion to adopt ordinance number forty-nine thirty-seven and approve the related ordinance summary.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Speckelmeier, seconded by Counselor Forstman, to adopt ordinance number forty-nine thirty-seven and approve the related ordinance summary. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselors. Next up, item B, ordinance forty-nine forty, mo, excuse me. Getting ahead of myself. Counselor Schroder?
Motion to adopt ordinance number forty-nine forty and approve the related.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Speckelmeier, to adopt ordinance number forty-nine forty and approve the related ordinance summary. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel Clerk Brockie. Next up, item C, ordinance forty-nine forty-one. Counselor Schroder?
Motion to adopt ordinance number forty-nine forty-one and approve the related ordinance summaries.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counsel President Kleberg, to adopt ordinance number forty-nine forty-one and approve the related ordinance summary. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel and Clerk Brockie. Next up, we have ordinance forty-nine forty-three. Counselor Schroder?
Motion to adopt ordinance number forty-nine forty-three and approve the related ordinances summary.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Wright, to adopt ordinance number forty-nine forty-three and approve the related ordinance summary. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Motion carries. Next, we move to room number eight, unfinished and new business. Item A, city council comments. Comments should not be related to an item currently for the city council or an item that may come before the city council in the foreseeable future, shall be limited to comments, not discussion.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
The past weekend, I was in Coeur d'Alene, and I wanted to point out and notice that Red Lobster was closed. Joanne's is closing, Maitie's was closing, and a couple other stores, including Big Lots, were either closing or already closed in their malls and throughout the city. So struggles are not just in Lewiston, those stores are closing everywhere, and businesses are struggling to stay afloat everywhere. So I think, I just wanted to point that out to say that we, I think as a city, need to be business friendly as possible and vigilant and care about our infrastructure, because if we care about it and people come and see us, and they see that we're taking care of our city, they might want to come here and bring their business here, and maybe startups. And so it's really important that we care about our infrastructure and that we're working forward so that they, those that come outside seeing and see us as thriving, because if they feel like we're a dying town, they're not going to want to even think about bringing their businesses here. And we're in really weird times right now, where a lot of big businesses that we've known to love and shop at are all going out for various reasons. And so we have a lot of work ahead of us as a, as a city and as a council. I just wanted to point that out to say more work to be had. It's a bummer, but yeah, lots of work to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Other counsel comments? Counselor Klein?
I just wanted to thank the Tribune and the Chamber for, for covering the information that's getting out there about the bond and trying to help people understand in the community about what it's about and really opening the doors for communication.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, we'll move to item B, city boards and commissions. Liaison updates. Are there any updates tonight?
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
The historic preservation, I zoomed into that one because I had immediately afterwards a Valley Vision meeting I had to go to, so I wasn't able to attend the historical preservation in person. But went there and on the Zoom, I mentioned the, what is it called that Tanya mentioned, the review? I bet. The committee reviews, and they go through, and they review everything.
Periodic.
Periodic review, thank you. Historic preservation is not within that due to, they get requested. So I just wanted to make sure I clarify that I brought it up to them, but they are not within that requirement, so. But I will bring it up to Public Works when we have our next meeting. And yeah, that's pretty much it. They're just working on that Disneyland. Walt Disney ceremony and figuring out the details still.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel President Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I know a couple of the board members on Liberty Theater, is that what you're referring to?
Where is the?
Disney celebration, yeah. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit more press about it as it gets closer, but Lily and Disney, they were married, and Walt were married up here in Normal Hill many years ago. And Liberty is trying to bring back a little bit of the Disney magic, I guess, if you will. As far as boards and commission updates, we have a Urban Renewal Agency meeting tomorrow. We'll get a audit report from Ms. Donna Alverdi. And have a NPO meeting Thursday. Lot of information.
Thank you, Counsel President Kleberg. Others, if not, we jump ahead to mayor comments. First thing I want to do is, I want to ask Damian if you'd please just stand up and introduce yourself to the council. They may not know who you are, and I'm sure they're wondering, wow, God really likes us, he's here listening. So please just tell them your possession, what you do at the city, they would like to know.
My name is Damian Glenn. I am a newly appointed recreation coordinator over at Parks and Rec. And I'm the staff liaison for the Parks and Rec Commission and the Cemetery and Urban Forestry Commission.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Damian, yeah. One of our star performers, we really appreciate you, Damian. The second thing, Counsel, I want to show you is, I did bring a letter, I came prepared in case you were favorable to that bond, but I would like to post a letter to our website endorsing this proposal. So I'm just going to hand it down, if you consider signing it, you can read it. I will hand it to Clerk Brockie after tonight and ask that we get it posted on the city's website, but I appreciate your support on that. And then lastly, I want to just give you a quick update from the Idaho Legislature and tell you that I spend a little time each week communicating with our state legislators, some of them. I do want to give a shout out to Senator Dan Foreman and Representative Brandon Mitchell. They do a very good job of staying in contact with me and giving me an update of what's going on in Boise. So I appreciate that because there's a lot of issues that impact the city of Lewiston. And the one that I, two of them that I want to bring to your attention, one of them has to do with road and bridge levies. And there have been some different uses of that over the past few years that have had an impact on our funding here at the city of Lewiston. There is an agreement that is down in Boise that's been put together by the Idaho Association of Counties, Association Idaho Cities and others to try and address some of these concerns at this point, that it's not going to move forward. And that's unfortunate, because I think it will have an impact on the city and some of the funding that we get for our roads and bridges. I did ask several of our legislators if they would please work to move this forward. I don't know what's going to happen with that. The second one is that I did receive an email, several of us did, from a member of the governor's office, asking the question, basically if the strategic initiatives fund were reduced, the allocation was reduced by, I think, twenty-one million or something like that, what our input or thoughts on that would be. Well, I can tell you for the city of Lewiston, our portion of that would drop one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from eight hundred, something like that, down to about, what is the math on that, six-twenty-ish or six-something? And so our legislators are down there, you know, making these funding decisions, and they're going to have real impacts on local units of government. And then this is just another one. Obviously, I don't support that, and I told them it's not a good idea. So I don't know what's going to happen, but should they choose to move money out of the strategic initiatives fund, which was basically a split of surplus tax revenues at the state of Idaho that we put in place back in 2015, half of that would go to other debt relief, and then half of it would go into the strategic initiatives funds to help the Idaho Transportation Department, then our local agencies like our local Highway Technical Assistance Committee, LTAC, that would then provide these grants to the cities to do projects. So when I get notes of this kind of stuff going on, it makes me very nervous, and it just creates another challenge for the city, especially when we do our budgeting, for example, and we'll take a look at things and say, well, here's this, but the budgeting's gone down. Well, sometimes it's not us, it's our friends in Boise. And so if you have the opportunity, if you think of that, if you see some of our local legislators, ask them for an update, you know? And you can ask them specific questions, what's going on in transportation funding, you know? What's going on in other types of funding that might impact cities? And, you know, question them, find out what their knowledge is of these issues, and then obviously tell them that we're concerned about this now, how this is impacting local units of government. So anyways, I share that with you, just to let you know that's spinning around out there. But you'll see the results of that when we meet this summer to start talking about our budgets. I'm hoping that they don't do some of these things, but it's happening, so. Agenda topics, item D.
Mayor?
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add FY twenty-six budget process discussion to our April seventh workshop, if we have availability.
That'll take a second, Mayor. I need a second.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Speckelmeier, seconded by Counselor Schroder, too.
No.
Or Counselor Forstman, pardon me.
She can take the credit.
Add to the April seventh work session.
I believe that's the date of the April workshop.
The work session?
Yes.
We, well, we'll just say the April work session. We'll confirm the date to make sure it is the seventh. Okay, to get a, and if you could repeat it specifically?
FY twenty-six budget process discussion.
Okay, FY twenty-six budget discussion process. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. It would be added to the April work session.
And just to add to it, I'll reach out to Director Gordon, what my thinking, so.
Appreciate that, Counselor, thank you. Counselors, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Last comment that I forgot.
May, Counselor?
I want to thank all the people that emailed about the bond and came in person to express their interest, their support for it. We got a lot of letters in support of the bond and wanting to see it go to vote, so hopefully, that's a good sign. And so I just want to thank the people, the time out of their day to make sure to email us and share their concerns and thoughts, because that's important for the city, to have citizens' input in order to make these pivotal decisions.
Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, we are at the impairment portion of our.
Second.
Would you get a motion? Did we get a motion?
Oh, no, we didn't, we didn't.
It's been moved by Counsel President Kleberg to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Schroder. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are.
Thank you, Counsel.
I wanted to show you.